This time I'd like to call the Garden Grove Housing Authority Meeting to order with the Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Beckles?
President.
Commissioner Broadwater?
President.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Wynn?
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Here.
Vice Chair Dalton?
Here.
Chair Beard?
Here.
Okay, we have oral communications related to housing authority matters, seeing none. We're at consent items. Anyone care to pull an item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. So move. Your second?
I second it up.
Call for the vote.
Commissioner Jones, I don't have your vote. Seven yes votes.
The next item is public hearings, proposed budget for fiscal year 2012-13. Your staff report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like Danny Wynn to make the staff report on the proposed budget.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. The Section 8 Housing Assistance Program is federally funded through the Department of Housing and Urban Development to assist very low-income families, seniors, and disabled persons in payment of rent on privately-owned rental units. The Garden Grove Housing Authority has subsidized over 2,300 families, and we administer an additional 300 families from incoming portability. Incoming portabilities are participants from housing authorities from other jurisdictions who moved into Garden Grove. An administrative fee is paid to the Garden Grove Housing Authority for administering these families. We also administer the Family Sufficiency Program. This program is for our current Section 8 participants and is designed to encourage participants toward career development through education and training. All Section 8 rental units are inspected before admission and annually to ensure they are decent, safe, and sanitary. Each year, Housing Authority staff inspects approximately 4,000 rental units. In addition, as part of the dissolution of the Garden Grove Agency in February 2012, the Housing Authority has taken on the housing assets of the former agency. These assets include land purchased by housing set aside funds, several homes that are being rented to low, moderate-income households, and several affordable housing agreements. Revenues from these rentals and housing agreements will be used to upkeep those units. That concludes my report. Mr. Okiriki will provide additional information now.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, the budget as proposed is a balanced budget, and we'll provide the necessary funding for all of the Section 8 subsidies to the low-income families as Mr. Wynn just outlined. The budget provides for continuation of Family Sufficiency Program, and it is estimated next year, fiscal year 2013, that the Authority will receive approximately $31.9 million to run the entire housing program. This amount includes $3 million in HARP portability program. Approximately $31 million is being appropriated for the voucher program and related operational costs, and $95,000 funds the Family Sufficiency Program. For the fiscal year, as Mr. Wynn pointed out, they will be taking over the responsibility of managing the civic center properties. And this concludes our report, and staff can answer any questions you have.
Any questions?
Moved issue.
It's a public hearing.
This time we'll open the public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak on this matter, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Moved issue.
Is there a second?
Second up.
Call for the vote.
Most received, seven yes votes.
Items for consideration, none. Matters from the chair, none. Commissioners, director, any items? Okay, we'll move to adjournment for July 24, 2012, 6:30.
No. Yeah, right now, okay.
We're gonna go fast.
Actually, take it down. We're gonna do it down.
At this time, I'd like to call a Garden Grove City Council meeting to order.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Beard?
Here.
Councilmember Broadwater?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Dalton?
Here.
It will have been invocation by Kingsley Okiriki, the Finance Director, and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Jones.
So please join me and prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear Lord, we humbly ask that you bless all who assemble here this evening and the work we seek to do. You have enabled us to serve you and our community, each in our own way. Help us to see each other's service as complimentary. Help us to work in harmony tonight as we seek to make the best decisions for our community at Garden Grove. Purify our intentions, straighten our purpose, and, Lord, grant that in serving our community, we may serve you. Amen.
Please face the flag and say the pledge together with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of the council meeting, we had a closed session item, and there's no reportable action taken. Okay, so we have some presentations.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Mr. Okiriki to make the presentations this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fatale. Tonight, the Garden Grove City Council is pleased to recognize two individuals who have enhanced our community with their generosity, passion, and spirit of service. They are the Senior Volunteer Women and Man of the Year, Clarice Pujagali and Frank Steinhoff. This special distinction recognizes their countless hours of charitable work with their respective nominating agencies. I'd like to ask Clarice and Frank to please come forward. Clarice is a Southern Californian native who taught elementary school for 38 years while she and her husband raised their daughters Denise and Jeremy. Now widowed, Clarice enjoys spending as much time as possible with her three grandchildren. Retired in Word only, Clarice regularly volunteers with Acacia Adult Day Services, the organization that nominated her for the special recognition tonight. She especially enjoys developing, conducting, and weekly therapeutic arts and craft classes. Clarice is a vibrant and caring instructor, and her energy is contagious. Even late in the day, Clarice can be relied upon to pep things up with a round of songs. Besides volunteering her time at Acacia Adult Day Services, Clarice is also involved with the Assistance League and the League Beta Zeta Chapter of Alpha Delta Kappa, the International Oral Teachers Association working to help children in need. When she does find time in her busy schedule, Clarice enjoys gardening, reading, keeping fit, and traveling, and this August, she's off to Europe on a cruise. Thank you, Clarice, for all you do for the community of Garden Grove. Now, let's move on to Francis J. Steinhoff, or Frank, to family and friends. Born in Iowa 88 years ago, Frank enlisted in the Army in 1943. As a radio pilot in World War II, he flew 50 missions with the famous Flying Fortress, B-17 bombers. Returning home, Frank finished school while walking nights at a supermarket where he met Evelyn. They married in 1948, and together they raised their daughter Patricia, and now spend time enjoying their grandchild and two great-grandchildren. Frank and Evelyn recently celebrated their 64th anniversary. Since arriving in Garden Grove in 1957, Frank has worked in the grocery business, also as a realtor, and most recently, he spent 20 years as the director of the Mann and Shannon Motuary. Finally retired, he enjoys golf, baseball games, cards, and billiards. He and Evelyn enjoy traveling. For most of his adult life, Frank has been an active volunteer for his church and the Garden Grove community. The Loose Leg Senior Center, who nominated him for this award, honor, has been the recipient of his many contributions, ranging from his leadership with the Meals on Wheels program to generously donating live fir trees that decorate the center during the holidays. Frank has been involved with the Knights of Columbus for 60 years, the First Friday Friars, the Orange County Catholic Men's Group, and the Greater Garden Grove Kiwanis Club. In fact, Frank was a founding father of Kiwanis back in 1975. Thank you, Frank, for your exceptional volunteer service to our community. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present both Clarice and Frank with their certificate of recognition and a memento for being named the Senior Volunteer Woman and Man of the Year. They are prime examples of commitment and service benefiting the community. Tonight, the city honors both of you as exceptional role models in the community. Thank you.
Cheers.
Clarice?
Yes.
I have a present for you.
I'll listen.
There you are.
Okay, get your own, Frank.
Podium's available there if you'd like to say a few words. I'd like to say a few words. Few words.
We'll take a couple pictures first. Just right there, turn around.
All right. Phil, come on in.
We know how to do this.
All right. One, two, and three. One more. One, two, and three.
I would like to speak. Thank you to the Garden Grove City Council. When I was a small child, I loved to visit my next-door neighbors who were elderly. They had stories to tell, and it seemed like they enjoyed my visits. But I always knew when it was time to go because they told me to go get a piece of candy from the candy dish. That was my hint. When I was seven years old, I remember telling my mother that I knew what I wanted to be when I grew up, and that was a second-grade school teacher. And I have found that I have realistic goals, that if I work and study and learn and stretch and prepare for and keep my eye on my goals, I can achieve what I set out to do. I also have learned that childhood influences the rest of your life. I became an elementary school teacher right here in Garden Grove, and my next goal was to be the best teacher that I could possibly be. Before comprehension, I had taught for 39 years, and I was thinking about retirement. My fear was that I would no longer be a contributing member of society, and I would fritter away my remaining time. I knew I wanted to give back to my community. And over the years, I admired Dr. and Mrs. Kellogg for their community involvement, and I discovered they had a connection to Acacia Adult Day Services. Acacia is a nonprofit organization that strives to improve and enhance the lives of individuals, older adults, other disabilities. While their loved ones go on about the business of the day, and thus, I have found the perfect place for me where I could perhaps brighten the day. When I'm at Acacia, I am once again visiting with neighbors and wonderful people who do not offer me a piece of candy when it's time to leave. But I leave knowing that, for the time I am there, my day is brightened. Thank you for the Lord.
I haven't got that much to say, but I will say what I think. I want to thank the Garden Grove Council. For the last 50 years, they've done a wonderful job right up to today. I think you're doing wonders, and it was an honor for me and a privilege to be your king for this strawberry ball. That's it. Good luck.
I see we have a community spotlight for another group that might be a little bit louder. A little bit.
All right. Our next presentation, Mr. Mayor. The Garden Grove City Council is pleased to recognize Pacifica High School's baseball team for their 2012 Division II Southern Section CIF Championship. Now, will the Pacifica Mariner players and coaches, please, come forward? Is there a good feet?
Yeah, you can lift up up here, so come on up here. Sure.
Oh, we have something.
No, no, not yet, not yet.
Come forward.
Not yet.
Kingsley has to say all the nice things.
I have to say all the nice things about the team. Pacifica High School, located in the west end of Garden Grove, first opened its doors in 1965, and since then, has enrolled more than 2,000 students each year. Very competitive, both in academics and in athletics. The Mariners are no strangers to championships. This is, however, the first time in the history of the school that the baseball team has added a CIF championship trophy to the case. Last August, the Mariners were recognized at Dodger Stadium as the 2011 American Legion State Champions. Standing there before the game, the team quietly took in the scenery and wondered what it would be like to actually play there. Their quiet hopes came true just 10 months later. On June 1, under the lights of the Dodgers stadium, the Mariners defeated Alisa Niguel in extra innings to win the CIF championship. They finished the season with a 12-game winning streak and an overall record of 28 wins and only five losses. "This team was really close, like a family," said Coach Kerr. "When a player had adversity on the field, we rallied around and supported him." And that same brotherhood came through on the field as well. With that kind of team support, it's no wonder the Mariners were well represented on the all-league and all-CIF teams, and that four of the 14 graduating seniors received scholarships to notable West Coast universities. At this time, Mr. Mayor, the and the city council would like to present Coach Kerr and the team captains with their crystal trophy to be displayed at your school. All players have also received their certificate of achievement. The city of Garden Grove is proud of the team's accomplishment and wishes them all the best in their educational and athletic endeavors. Congratulations, guys.
Yeah, we're gonna get you up in one way or another.
I'll squeeze in there somewhere, take a picture.
My fingers. You know, I don't know how, maybe I have to stand up on this.
Can someone go behind?
Maybe they can just fill this in in some crouch and stuff.
He's the one taking the picture, so you have to look this way. This guy is taking the picture.
Get on the mic. Get on the mic.
Yo. Hello.
Well, I'm not sure we can see any of the council.
Five, two, three. One more. Five, two.
Congratulations, Ben.
Thank you. We're very proud of you guys. Outstanding. Congrats. Thank you. We're super proud of you guys.
Same to me, too.
Mayor Bill Dalton, city council, family, friends, and the whole Garden Grove community. It is a tremendous honor to receive this community spotlight award. There are so many people to thank for this opportunity to stand before you today. First, I'd like to thank Lauren Schwalm, our superintendent of the Garden Grove Unified School District, Gabrielle Mafi, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, and Jolie Armatis, Assistant Superintendent of Personnel Services, who have hired such an amazing staff that promotes the highest standards for the students. Under their guidance, they have employed Principals Lorraine Ray and now-current Principal Jason Bavacqua, who have taken the student-first philosophy and have rallied a school to take pride in their academics, personal interests, and their community. These visions have trickled down to the baseball program at Pacifica High School, where these young men have pursued victory with honor in the classroom and on the playing field. In just six short years, this great coaching staff, which is made up of three Garden Grove Unified School District alumni, in Tony Serna, Bobby Calderon, Tony Kyra, Greg Lamelli, and Pat Ogil, have guided the program to 107 victories, two Empire League Championships, 11 CIF playoff victories, a CIF quarterfinalist, and ultimately, the first CIF championship for Pacifica High School. Furthermore, two players have gone on to play professionally, and most importantly, over 17 players have gone on to play college, including 10 at the four-year level. This year alone, we have players that will attend UCLA, UCI, Cal Poly Pomona, and the University of Southern California, all on scholarships. All on scholarships, thanks in part to countless hours among administrators, teaching staff, coaches, and most importantly, the parents and family. Lastly, a great deal of gratitude must be given to the community of Garden Grove. The support has been overwhelming. It was evident at our championship game at Dodger Stadium, where over 3,000 fans came out to watch. This has been, by far, the most exciting time I've had experience in my coaching career. Coaching these young men and watching them mature into respectable, fine, young individuals is something I will not soon forget. Many former and current players are pursuing future careers in becoming police officers, firemen, teachers, coaches, and the armed forces. I am truly honored to be part of these young men's lives and this community. On behalf of the Pacifica High School baseball team, I would like to present Mayor Dalton with the Pacifica baseball shirt.
You know, I don't know how it's really have to stand up on this.
Can someone go behind?
It's only gets so bad on this.
Maybe they can just fill this in and some crouch and stuff.
He's the one taking the picture, so you have to look this way. This guy is taking the picture.
Get on the mic.
What?
Get on the mic.
Yo. Hello.
Well, I'm not sure we can see any of the council.
We have a storm warning.
He might need it.
Five, two, three. One more. Five, two.
He used to come all the way in this one.
Congratulations. We're very proud of you guys. Outstanding. Congrats. Thank you. We're so proud of you guys.
Me too.
Mayor Bill Dalton, city council, family, friends, and the whole Garden Grove community. It is a tremendous honor to receive this community spotlight award. There are so many people to thank for this opportunity to stand before you today. First, I'd like to thank Lauren Schwalm, our superintendent of the Garden Grove Unified School District, Gabrielle Mafi, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, and Jolie Armatis, Assistant Superintendent of Personnel Services, who have hired such an amazing staff that promotes the highest standards for the students. Under their guidance, they have employed Principals Lorraine Ray and now current Principal Jason Bavacqua, who have taken the student-first philosophy and have rallied a school to take pride in their academics, personal interests, and their community. These visions have trickled down to the baseball program at Pacifica High School, where these young men have pursued victory with honor in the classroom and on the playing field. In just six short years, this great coaching staff, which is made up of three Garden Grove Unified School District alumni, in Tony Serna, Bobby Calderon, Tony Kira, Greg Lamelli, and Pat Ogle, have guided the program to 107 victories, two Empire League Championships, 11 CIF playoff victories, a CIF quarterfinalist, and ultimately, the first CIF championship for Pacifica High School. Furthermore, two players have gone on to play professionally, and most importantly, over 17 players have gone on to play college, including 10 at the four-year level. This year alone, we have players that will attend UCLA, UCI, Cal Poly Pomona, and the University of Southern California, all on scholarships. All on scholarships, thanks in part to countless hours among administrators, teaching staff, coaches, and most importantly, the parents and family. Lastly, a great deal of gratitude must be given to the community of Garden Grove. The support has been overwhelming. It was evident at our championship game at Dodger Stadium, where over 3,000 fans came out to watch. This has been by far the most exciting time I've had experience in my coaching career. Coaching these young men and watching them mature into respectable, fine, young individuals is something I will not soon forget. Many former and current players are pursuing future careers in becoming police officers, firemen, teachers, coaches, and the armed forces. I am truly honored to be part of these young men's lives and this community. On behalf of the Pacifica High School baseball team, I would like to present Mayor Dalton with the Pacifica baseball shirt, hat, along with our American Legion State Championship patch that we won this past summer. Thank you for your time this afternoon, and go Mariners.
After that, okay, we're gonna go to all communications for the council, the successor agency, and the sanitary district. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Those are our boys.
All right.
I'm proud of them all.
You bet. Okay, B.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. I know you missed it the first month, but I got out of my sick bed to try and get to you before the end of June. I must bring to you and to the residents of Garden Grove necessary information to remind you of Flag Day and all the way to the Fourth of July. Very important time in our history and in our daily lives. I guess I want to start, and believe it or not, I didn't bring any flags today. I tell you how bad I felt. I walked out of the house without any flags. I had one planned, but I didn't pick it up. I wanted to share with you bits of our president's proclamation dealing with Flag Day and National Flag Week. I was very impressed. He began, it was 96 years ago, which is not much older than the gentleman that just left here, that we began to celebrate Flag Day, so not that long ago. But for over 200 years, our flag has proudly represented our nation, our ideals, our home here and abroad. He went on to say that the flag will remain forever an emblem of ideas that inspired our great nation, liberty, democracy, and the enduring freedom to make our lives what we will, like we saw the young men just now. As we reflect on our heritage over these days, let's remember that our destiny is stitched together, just like those 50 stars, those 13 stripes in red, white, and blue. You don't get to see the other red, white, and blue flag, which is the Juneteenth flag. But President Obama said in conclusion that he did proclaim again the 14th of June as Flag Day and the week beginning Juneteenth, June 10th, as National Flag Week. And he also called upon the people of the United States to observe with pride all of the due ceremony necessary for those days from Flag Day to Independence Day, and to celebrate our heritage in public gatherings and activities, to publicly recite the Pledge of Allegiance, which is the day we enjoyed last week. Those were his thoughts on those days. His thoughts on another day, which is Juneteenth, I'll share with you. This particular excerpt where he said, "Though it may take decades of struggle and collective effort before African-Americans were granted freedom, equal treatment, and protection under the law, Juneteenth is recognized by Americans everywhere as a symbol of milestone in our journey towards a more perfect union." Juneteenth, have I totally confused you? Are you really anxious to know what Juneteenth is? Well, the flag of Juneteenth, which you didn't see, also brings honor and reverence to our nation. It is also red, white, and blue. I was blessed to be a part of several Juneteenth celebrations this year, and I'm sorry, I couldn't invite you to one this year. I wasn't a part of anything that was happening. But I had a wonderful flag raising at my home before my ritual, and I also attended at Thornton Park in the city of Santa Ana, where Juneteenth was enjoyed by hundreds of Orange County residents after a two-year absence of this event, which is usually done by the National Council of, National Council, the NOACP, excuse me, get organizations mixed up. And I also had the opportunity to travel to Sacramento to unfortunately not raise the flag, but I did have homage paid to the 10th anniversary of Juneteenth as a state holiday. And I know you know, all aware of that, and that you raised your red, black, and green, or your Juneteenth flag, or your American flag on Juneteenth, to recall this. Well, in Sacramento, I had an opportunity to meet with the state librarian, who presented an outstanding exhibit on Juneteenth, and it dealt primarily with the Black History of California, which I never learned and probably no one else has learned. But much of it came from the archives, and it is available to view. Not only should you run up to Sacramento, but you have the computer now. And if you take a look at www.libryca.gov press release, they'll give you at least a capsule of what that wonderful exhibit was like. I do have some actual pieces of that exhibit for anyone that's interested. So, remember Juneteenth. It was a day of celebration in 1865, when the last enslaved Africans in Gaveston, Texas, learned of General Order Number Three that said, "All slaves were free." Those enslaved Americans who had worked an additional two and a half years after the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation were pleased. They began what was the first holiday for enslaved and descendants of slaves, Juneteenth. And in 1979, the state of Texas officially recognized this day and created a state-played holiday called Juneteenth. While there are now 42 states within the nation that recognize Juneteenth in some form of legislation that day, I'd like you to take a look at the work of Dr. Ronald Myers at National Juneteenth at Yahoo, and do have a safe and wonderful Fourth of July, and remember to fly your flag and remember your history. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll close our communications. We'll recess the council meeting and go to the successor agency.
Chairman Clark, would you please call roll for the successor agency?
Member Broadwater.
Here.
Member Dalton.
Here.
Member Wynn.
Here.
Vice Chair Beard.
Here.
Chair Jones.
Here. We did have a closed session. There was a reportable item that the board authorized participation in litigation involving the Water Park Hotel and the State Department of Finance regarding its enforceable obligations. And we've already done oral. We'll go to consent items. Consent items, just the warrants. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Call the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Public hearings, 5A, proposed successor agency budget for fiscal year 2012 and 13.
Mr. Chair, Jim Delalong will present the agency budget this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Good evening, Chair, and members of the successor agency. The item before you for your consideration is the 2012-13 budget for the successor agency. This budget is based on the enforceable obligations approved by the State Department of Finance for the period of July through December 2012, and the anticipated enforceable obligations for the period of January through June 2013. This is a balanced budget. The successor agency receives its funding through the county auditor controller and amounts to cover the approved enforceable obligations. It is recommended that the successor agency adopt the attached resolution approving the successor agency's budget for fiscal year 2012-13. That concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, the staff? This is a public hearing, so we have to open for any public comment, anyone? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Members?
Move the issue.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
No items for consideration, any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we adjourn.
Okay, at this time, we'll go to the sanitary district meeting. Let the record show that all members are present, and we'll go to consent items. You didn't do this, huh? I'm sorry. You know, I did it for so many years, I apologize. Let the record show that everybody's present. We'll go to consent items. Any discussion? Entertain a motion?
Move the consent items.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Let's go to public hearings. Mr. Fratell.
Yes, Mr. President. We have a series of public hearings, and we're gonna take these one at a time and ask for an action on 3A, 3B, and 3C, one at a time. Your first public hearing is a report certifying a statement of delinquent and unpaid charges for the refuse disposal, and Monica Neely is here to give a staff report on this item.
President and members of the sanitary district board, item 3A asks that the sanitary district board adopt the attached resolution and direct staff to file the necessary documentation with the county auditor by August 10th of 2012 for the collection of delinquent solid waste fees on the property tax bills. Public waste services bills customers quarterly for solid waste disposal. If a billing remains unpaid for a period of 60 days or more at the end of the fiscal year, the assessment process is implemented. The last relevant billing was prepared and mailed in February of this year, and all charges remaining on that billing became delinquent by May 1st. 60 days after the delinquency date, the delinquent amount plus the associated percent penalty may be filed with the county auditor prior to the August 10th deadline. The amount submitted and recorded by parcel would be collected at the same time and in the same manner as regular county property taxes. The parcels also become subject to the same penalties and to the same procedure for foreclosure and sale as provided for ordinary county taxes. Prior to the fees becoming a lien against the property, the individual property owner is notified of the delinquent amount. To further ensure that all parties are aware of the potential lien, a notice announcing this hearing date was published in the Garden Grove Journal and the Orange County Register. It is recommended that the Board of Directors conduct a public hearing, adopt the attached resolution approving the annual report detailing the delinquent refuse accounts, and direct staff to file the necessary documentation with the county auditor for the collection of the delinquent fees on the property tax bills. This concludes staff's report, and we're available for any questions.
Do you have the amount of the total amount that is collected?
Actually, the amount that is here now is about $333,000, but they will be collecting payments until the middle of, middle end of July, and so it will go down before the final deadline. But at this point, the list is about $330,000.
Okay. Any comments for staff? At this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on the resolution adopting a report certifying a statement of delinquent and unpaid charges for refuse disposal services to be collected on the property tax?
Just how many different claims there are, just the number of claims?
You're asking how many there are?
Yeah, like you asked for the amount total.
Oh, I'm sorry. How many accounts there, where's that? At this time, there's like 2,026 accounts that are delinquent.
Anybody like to speak before the board? And then, at this time, we will close the public hearing. Gentlemen, what is your wish?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Let's go to 3B.
Mr. President, 3B is also a public hearing to consider a resolution authorizing charges for improvement district number one to be collected on the tax rule, and Monica Neely is here to give a staff report on this item.
This item asks that the sanitary board of directors confirm...
Are you speaking into the mic?
Is it, can't hear me. Now, can you hear me?
I'm strained to hear you.
Okay. I'll try and speak louder. Item 3B asks that the sanitary board of directors confirm the report detailing charges proposed to be collected on the tax rolls for refuse collection services in the sanitary districts improvement district number one, and adopt the attached resolution, which directs staff to file the necessary documentation with the county for the collection of the fees on the property tax bills. This improvement district is made up of those areas that were formerly in the Midway City Sanitary District. The Midway City Sanitary District collected sanitary service charges by placing them on the tax rolls. In order to continue this system for these customers, the board must each year approve a report detailing charges proposed to be collected on these rolls. The service charge for the standard residential service in district number one is $18.61 per month, or $223.32 per year. A written report has been prepared and filed with the secretary, containing a description of each parcel of real property receiving services for refuse collection in district number one, and the proposed charges for each parcel in conformity with the Garden Grove Sanitary District Ordinance Number Three. Staff recommends that the sanitary district board of directors conduct the public hearing, adopt the attached resolution, and direct staff to file the necessary documentation with the county for the collection of these fees on the property tax bills. This includes our report, and we are available for questions.
Any comments for staff? Hearing none, at this time, we will open the public hearing. Anybody like to speak on the resolution authorizing charges for improvement district number one to be collected on the property tax rule? Hearing none, at this time, we will close the public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen and lady, would you...
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Let's go to 3C.
Mr. President, 3C is a public hearing to consider a resolution authorizing charges for sewer services in the area district that extend beyond the city of Garden Grove, and Monica Neely is here to give a staff report on this item.
As he said, item 3C is the annual process that allows the city to collect sewer service charges through the property tax roll for those sewer service parcels which are outside of the city limits and do not receive water services from the city. These are sections of the district primarily in county areas near Anaheim and Stanton. In order to place sewer charges on the tax roll, the board must conduct a public hearing on whether to approve the report detailing charges proposed to be collected. The attached resolution would approve the annual report detailing service charges for each parcel in the service area noted previously. It is recommended that the sanitary district board of directors conduct the public hearing, adopt the attached resolution, and direct staff to file the necessary documentation with the county for the collection of the fees on the property tax rolls. Once again, this concludes our report, and we're available for questions.
Any questions for staff? You know, I heard that this, actually Anaheim Island, or whatever they call it up there, is going to, was gonna be taken over by the city of Anaheim. Did that fall apart, or?
The last I heard is they were sort of doing it block by block or parcel by parcel. Years ago, they tried to do it in its entirety, and the residents voted it down. So now, from what I understand, is that the city is sort of doing it block by block on a voluntary basis. But I don't know how far they've gotten, and how much of that area is now actually in the city of Anaheim.
At this time, any questions for staff? At this time, we will open up the public hearing. Anybody like to speak from the resolution authorizing charges for sewer services in the areas of the district that extend beyond the borders of Garden Grove? Anybody? Going once, twice? Okay. At this time, we will close the public hearing, and we will entertain a motion.
Move it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Let's go to 3D.
Mr. President, 3D is a public hearing to consider the budget for the sanitary district. Mr. President, 3D is a public hearing to consider the budget for the sanitary district, and Dave Etsminger is here to give a staff report on these items.
I'll give it.
I take that back. Mr. O'Caricki will present the budget.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm president of the sanitary district. For 2012, we do have a balanced budget for the sanitary district, which includes the sewer and the solid waste programs. And in terms of budget highlights for the year, we are planning to continue the planned sewer capital program, which includes both the capital, capacity and structural projects that are approved, and for which we issued bonds a couple of years back. The department also intends to continue the fats and oil, oil and grease control education, and also on the solid waste side, to continue the AB 939 waste diversion efforts that tries to divert stuff from the landfill. In terms of numbers, we go with sewer first. We do have a balanced budget. We have a beginning balance of $189,000. We are not planning to issue any bonds this fiscal year. We still have some resources from prior bonds and also revenues available to continue the projects. In terms of projected revenues from sewer services and collections, that totals is estimated at $10.6 million for the fiscal year with a total funds available of $10.8 million. Operations and maintenance will take approximately $3.6 million. Contractual services, about $1,001. Debt service for the outstanding bonds of the sewer program amounts to about $1.46 million for the year. And the department will draw in into capital replacement and improvement a total of $3.46 million during the fiscal year. And we are looking at having a balance of approximately $1 million at the end of the fiscal year on the sewer side. For the solid waste program, we do have a beginning balance of $272,000. The projected revenue, which are the collections that still come into the city, most of the collections for the solid waste now go directly to the, to the hall, the Garden Grove disposal. But some of them that are still collected via property tax or that show up at the city hall, we estimate that collections to total about $3.1 million. Operations and maintenance will take about $1,001.6 during the fiscal year. We are also setting aside reserves of $500,000 towards the Langdon pit here in Garden Grove, and the contractual services of about $1.7 million are just the revenues that we have to transmit back to the hall for the fiscal year. And with all of that, that leaves a small balance of approximately $23,000 for the solid waste program. And that concludes my report, and we can ask any questions you have.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none. Can we do this all in one shot, 3D? Okay. At this time, we will open up the public hearing. Anybody like to speak on this issue? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing, and we will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Okay, we have no items for consideration. Matters from chair or board members? Anybody have any comments? Hearing none, we will adjourn until Tuesday, July 24th at 6:30 PM.
At this time, we'll reconvene the council meeting, let the record show all members are present, and we'll go to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended that items 6A through 6H be acted unsimultaneously unless a separate discussion or action is requested by a council member.
Move the consent items.
Second.
Motion and second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, your first public hearing is a protest hearing on the spring 2012 weed abatement notices, and Sabrina Saltis is here to give a staff report on this item.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, twice a year, the fire department initiates the city's weed abatement program, and there are three steps, which include the council declaring a public nuisance, a public hearing after the notices have been sent to clear the lots to the owners, and a public hearing after the lots are cleared and invoices have remained unpaid by the owners. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is the third step for a public hearing to be held regarding the invoices that were sent to property owners in April. It is recommended that council receive testimony from members of the public and take appropriate action, be it to uphold any objections and direct staff how you would like me to proceed, overrule the objections and direct staff to proceed with the weed abatement process, and if no objections, direct staff to proceed with the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none. Yes, go ahead, Peggy.
How many people and how much money? There is one lot that did not pay, and the amount that they owe is, if you hold on one moment. I apologize. It's in my folder. The amount that they owe the city is $510.48.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion.
Move the issue.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
7B.
Mr. Mayor, your next public hearing is to consider the Garden Grove Tourism Improvement District advisory report and assessment, and Greg Blodgett is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. Mayor, council members, tonight we have a public hearing and the consideration of a resolution confirming the annual report of the Garden Grove Tourist Improvement District, GG TID, and the loving of assessment for 2012, 2013. The purpose of the Garden Grove TID is to free cost of the advertising marketing efforts, and also designed to increase overnight stays within the Garden Grove TID, and also for construction and maintenance of improvements and activities and programs that promote and encourage tourism within the Garden Grove TID. The Garden Grove TID includes hotels along Harbor Boulevard from the North City Boundary to Garden Grove Boulevard, and the district has two tiers, tier one, which is equivalent of 2.5 percent, equivalent of a room rate of gross rent per occupied room, and then tier two is 0.5. Tier two is actually south of Lampton Avenue, and tier one is north of Lampton Avenue along Harbor. It is recommended that the city council conduct a public hearing and determine if there's any protests, and if there is no majority protest, then adopt the attached resolution. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Move the issue.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
7C.
Mr. Mayor, 7C is to consider the proposed budget for fiscal year 2012, 13, and all the items 7C 1 through 7C 6 will be acted on under this one public hearing, and Mr. O'Caricki is here to give a staff report on the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. Mayor, council members, I do have a PowerPoint presentation, but before we get into that, just quickly though, in your agenda packet, you have the staff memo and budget resolutions, which detail, which details the proposed fiscal year 2012, capital and operations expenditures of the city, and the projected revenues and other fund sources to pay for them. As the city manager pointed out, agenda item 7-1 addresses the city base budget, and which includes all of the city operating budget for basic services, water, cable, grant services, capital improvements, mobile, and the special assessments. Mobile Heart Park is not part of it this year. The rest of the items, 7C 2 through 6, are all the related and enabling resolutions that you are being asked to approve tonight to effectively pass all of the city's fiscal year 2012, 13 proposed base budget. Just a quick summary of the current fiscal year to date performance that is about to end in a few days, June 30. The year has gone largely as we expected. With the exception of the redevelopment agency going away, our, the year budget-wise has progressed, like I said, as we planned it. Revenue recovery has been slow, and we knew that, but we have also seen some spikes in sales tax revenue on account of the higher gas taxes over the past few months. Property tax has been solid as we expected, and the hotels are doing just as well, given the sluggish economy. We will meet our revenue targets for the current fiscal year. However, again, like I pointed out, the AB 26 legislation that abolished the agency was sort of a curveball, and we have been walking through that in terms of the impact on the expenditure side. And specifically on the expenditure side, we are on target with the projected budget cuts and reductions that we adopted at the beginning of the fiscal year. The hiring freeze and expenditure restrictions are still in place. The goal is to break even or come in a little better than planned in the adopted budget. However, we do not have any anticipation that we're going to have any funds to carry over to the new year, which is the subject of tonight's proposed budget considerations. Moving on to the new year, I am glad to say that we do have a balanced budget, and especially in this very difficult and unsettling economic times. The presentation will outline how we got there and what is included in the budget. The picture that I'm showing, in my opinion, really captures what's been going on. It's been a very slow and long recovery. I don't know if you see all these small prints there. One of the guys is saying this says the recovery is slowing down, and the other guy is asking how can you tell? Everything that we've heard is that the recovery is really slow, imperceptible.
It's not on our screen.
Not on your screen?
Hasn't been.
It hasn't been.
Is it on, your screen on?
We have to turn it on.
Gotta get a chas in here.
Technology.
Technology. It's on these ones. Is it on now?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, so I was saying, the picture there, maybe you can see it better now. The economy has been very slow.
I thought I was going blind, and I don't want to say anything.
So much for transparency.
But anyway, we have been consistent with our financial strategy, which is a three-pronged strategy, one of which is cut costs. That cost, cutting containment, tapping ready day funds, and looking for ways to recover costs, and perhaps even new revenue. In terms of context, again, you know, I can't emphasize enough, and it's been out there in the news, it has been a sluggish, half-hearted, imperceptible, and very suspect economic recovery over the past couple of years. And unfortunately, I don't know if it's a good news or a bad news, it will probably be more of the same over the next fiscal year. I don't think the total we saw in that picture is going anywhere speeding up anytime soon. The stubbornly high unemployment is still with us, and low consumer confidence, which affects our sales tax. On the state side, the dissolution of the redevelopment agency, we're still walking through that, and the state does have a balanced budget, and I put that in quote, because when the state balances their budget, there are some things that tend to affect the cities as the budget year progresses. On the city side, you know, because of the dissolution of the agency, we have seen serious delays in development activities, and again, we are continuing to look at a structural budget deficit where our expenditures are outpacing our new revenue, and we're making every effort to bring that in line. For Garden Grove, it has been a very difficult, it has been very difficult trying to put together a budget under the situation here with the slow revenue recovery, the agency, and we have looked at every, in fact, we're taking a broader and more invasive approach this year with cost reduction and cost containment. But however, you know, our three-pronged budget strategy of cost cutting and containment, seeking new revenues or cost recovery opportunities, and using reserves, another one-time funds to balance the budget, it has worked, you know, last year, this year, and that's the same approach that we are focusing on going forward. And again, I'll go into, in a few more slides, the details of the actual efforts that we have put forward in order to try to balance this budget. And this slide is kind of busy slide, but I wanted to highlight just the revenues in, highlighting in yellow. Sales tax, as I pointed out, if you go to the last column on your right, that's our projected revenue estimate.
They may not be able to see the last column. Is there any way? Is that true? On my screen, I don't see it.
2012, 2013?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can see that.
But you can see it?
Yeah, you can see it. Okay. All right.
That's right.
We saved the crummy screen for you.
Sales tax, like I said before, we have seen some spike in sales tax, and we're projecting that for 2012, 13, we're going to realize approximately $18.2 million, which is approximately a million over what we started out in the current fiscal year. And much of that is, you know, because of the high gas tax, gas prices, I want to say. And on the property tax side, property tax has been very stable, and the number there in the highlighted in yellow, the $7 million in that column versus 5.8, that includes the adjustment in paramedic tax that we approved earlier in the year. Motor vehicle tax has been steady, and again, the transient occupancy tax, the hotel tax, we think we'll see some improvement in that next year from what we planned this year to, of $10.1 million to $10.6 million. And the very last one that is highlighted there, land sales, we are going to sell land that's worth about $1.4 million, and bring that in to help balance the budget. Now, in terms of the actual budget actions that we took in trying to get this budget balanced, we defunded six public safety positions, and by defunding, I mean that we did not fund them. They are going to remain vacant for the whole year. We also instituted another round of early retirement, and this year, what is new there is the buyout. And another new element there is the furlough that was started about a month ago, and that equates to about 4.6 percent salary cut for most of, most employees except for, I believe, the public safety group. And we are going to continue the hiring freeze and forced labor laws, and we'll continue to hold line, hold the line on contractual and other expenditures, and major expenditures that are not critical, we are deferring those to the, for the future. In terms of numbers here, the budget cut for, on the labor side, amounts to about $2.78 million, and that includes everything that we hope to achieve through the early retirement buyout, the public safety, the funded positions, the furlough, and a small amount of non-labor expenditure savings. Land sales is about $1.4 million, as I pointed out, and in order to make all of this work, we are going to draw down approximately $7.5 million from different parts, and we'll see another schedule in a couple of slides that outlines each of the parts that we're drawing from. With all of that, we are projecting a year-end basic fund balance of approximately $67,000. In terms of the breakdown of the $2.78 million that we're saving on the expenditure side, labor is about 2.5, and then the non-labor is at $258,000. And with respect to the drawdowns, we are drawing down $3.5 million from reserves. And as we, as we plan, and this is consistent with the three-year plan that we outlined and shared with council earlier, we're going to take a million dollars from the self-insurance fund- with council earlier, we're going to take $1 million from the self-insurance fund, $1 million from workers' compensation fund, $1 million from the vehicle replacement fund, and another $1 million from the development impact fee fund. Taking these monies from this fund doesn't jeopardize the integrity of the funds. The funds are still well-funded, and we believe that these monies will not jeopardize, as I said, the integrity of the funds, and it will go a long way to help us balance the basic services budget. Now, this is a little bit more detail, showing everything on one slide, and our total, when you look at our basic budget, your total resources, when you add up all the revenues, all the transfers, everything coming in, we're estimating about $82.7 million. And in terms of additions for the fiscal year on the expenditure side, our base budget, when we loaded everything that is in place, it's approximately 90.9, almost $91 million. We added a little bit of supplemental operations, and things that are mandated, we don't have any choice, we have to do them, and we also added approximately $348,000 for lighting, street lighting, and that's unavoidable. When you tally all of those, our total base budget is about $94.3 million. Then the cuts that we have made, which includes the defunded public safety positions, savings from early retirement and buyout program and the furlough, that amounts to about, you know, $2.78 million. You've seen that on the previous slides. When we deduct that from our total base budget, our base budget now amounts to about $91.56 million. And I want to go back a little bit on the early retirement and buyout savings. The number there, we are expecting $540,000 savings, but that's as of last week. We had to cut it off at some point in order to prepare the budget and present. The program is still open, and we are anticipating that more people may come forward to take the early retirement or take the buyout option, and that will yield additional savings as we move through the end of the open window. So with that, we have a revised expenditure budget of about $91.56 million, which leaves a deficit of $8.8 million that we needed to plug. And there, we are using, again, the $3.5 million in reserves, and drawing down a million each from the various funds that are shown there, and we are adding a million four from the proceeds of land sale in order to make the budget balanced. And basically, this is a summary of how we're balancing, and how we're balancing the basic services budget for the fiscal year. In terms of our summary, again, it's zero color, zero inflation. We have a furlough that amounts to approximately 4.65% salary cut. We have budget cut reductions of our total in about $2.78 million, the reserve drawdowns of approximately 7.5, and land sales of about $1.4 million. The one thing I want to point out on the reserve drawdowns, this is all based on where we think the revenue will come in at this point. If we do better on the revenue side, we will not exercise that drawdown in the reserves. So we'll monitor this on a monthly basis as we move along the year, and hopefully, if we do better on the revenue side, maybe the hotel transient occupancy tax comes in higher or sales tax a little bit better, then we wouldn't have to draw down all of that monies from reserves. With all of that, we are projecting a year-end, again, balance of only $67,000. In terms of the outlook, the economic recovery is very elusive. We don't know right now whether it's going to speed up, slow down. The hope is, our budget is based on what is right now and what we're expecting. The city revenues, again, you know, I pointed this out several times, is largely dependent on the economy. We have seen some recovery in sales tax, property tax, and hotel tax, and the other revenues are basically remaining flat. And we are continuing, of course, to explore cost recovery and when possible, revenue growth opportunities. And that concludes my report, and I can take any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? I see none. I'll open a public hearing if anyone here would like to speak on this. Charles Mitchell.
I have three questions on the budget. Number one, what is the total of the city's reserves? And second question, what are our pension liabilities, and are there any negotiations planned to try to balance our pension obligations?
Yes, Kingsley, go ahead.
Yeah. In terms of city reserves, the $3.5 million that we outlined there is basically the last of the reserve, what we call, quote, "reserve" that we have. Our approach has been for contingencies like insurance, vehicle replacement, and things like that, that we fully fund them every year. And that's why those funds have the monies in them, and we're able to take care of whatever emergencies that come as a result of that. What we're doing here, it's looking at those as, well, we set aside funds in those funds, and every year we pay interest on the money that we set aside in those funds. The million dollars that we're going back and taking from, say, the vehicle fund or the insurance fund, it's essentially going back to, say, maybe over the past five years, calculating all the interest that we have paid to those funds, and say, we can take that back and use it in the general fund without jeopardizing the integrity of those funds. But in terms of actual reserves, the city doesn't have specifically set aside a reserve anywhere else. I don't know if that answered your question.
Charles.
Hold on, just one moment, please, Charles. Go ahead, did you have another question?
On the pension, on the pension side, we do have pension liability, and the important thing is that the actual pension cost every year, we are able to pay, and that is included in the total budget, what we have to make in terms of the employer portion of the obligation to make payments to purse. And we do not have the extra liability of retiree medical liability. All we have as a city are the actual retirement obligations of employees, and for public safety and non-public safety, the payments that we make every year, we include it, it's included in this overall budget that you're looking at. So we fund it every year, and we make those payments every year.
Okay, thank you. You haven't filled out a card before, have you?
No, I haven't.
Okay, why don't you come up? Well, go ahead, come on up here anyway, and then before you leave, I appreciate you filling out a card.
My name is Selvin Fertado. The question I had was, what is the actual balance that the city has in reserves?
Well, the actual balance that we have in reserve, there is no policy that sets aside a reserve in any particular fund. We did, what we have, it's the way we manage is, we have a lot of internal service funds. Internal service funds, you know, includes, we have a fund set aside for vehicle funds, where we set aside monies every year. If we buy a new vehicle, we depreciate them, the equivalent of the depreciation amount, we actually fund it and set it aside. We do have an insurance fund where we do basically the same thing. So we have all these internal service funds that we have funds in that set aside for replacement or emergencies, and those are the funds that we have outlined here. So when you look at our city, you know, if you're looking at a policy that says we must have, say, 20% of general fund in reserves, we do not have that. But we take the approach that if we have an obligation, if we have a liability and we know about it, we include it and we fund it, and we set aside money for it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Harder to know.
Yeah, no, no. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Are we able to swap?
Why don't these people come up here so we can get them recognized? I mean, they're just...
But are we able to, if you put money in the blue can, can you use it for the yellow can? Because if you put money into the, let's say, the pension fund, and more people are retiring all the time because of, you know, number one, you're questioning them, two, and also people are aging out and they want to retire. So if you've got money in the pension fund, and you take it out to put it over in the blue fund, and then all of a sudden you have more people retiring, and the rates have gone up, so are you able to do that, actually, and be safe? Because like you say, vehicles wear out. You know, you never know, it could be a rainy year, and some vehicle could be destroyed due to rain, and I mean, insurance is supposed to cover them 100%, but we all know they don't, and then you have to pay the difference out of a fund, but if you've borrowed that money from another fund, you know, so that's kind of the issue. If we're borrowing from Peter to pay Paul, sooner or later, basically, all the apostles are going to be out of money. And then what will we do? If we put it aside, we're assuming we're going to need a good portion of that to work off of. I know when I make my own personal budget every year, I budget food. Food means that somebody is going to eat it. My car is going to be the gas and repairs. It doesn't mean I'm going to turn around and take my gas and repair money and take my food money, because then all of a sudden, you end up, and it's the last Thursday of the month, and you realize you're minus $25. So my question basically is, are we allowed to move funds around like that, that have been budgeted for one thing or another over time?
Yeah, I can answer that.
One word will answer that question. The answer is yes.
Well, yeah.
Just answer it.
Yeah.
Okay, then. Okay. This time, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
We can move that whole list. So move.
Yeah. Second. Have a motion second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, we're going to, at the request of a couple of council members, take a quick five-minute break.
Ms. Ann Eifert is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, you have before you a resolution establishing and amending user fees for various city services. The city's philosophy has been to try to recover most, if not all, of the costs for such services, although it's recognized that is not always practical or possible. All city departments are review the current fees charged, study the costs of services being provided, and identify fees that should be added or considered for adjustment to offset new or increased costs for providing the services. You have before you a complete list of the proposed fee changes, which includes fees for community development, engineering, fire services, facility rental charges, and other community service fees. The proposed charges will allow the city to recover approximately $150,000 in costs annually, depending on the level and nature of services provided. A public hearing is required for the establishment and amendment of these fees. If approved, the new fees will become effective 60 days following the adoption of the resolution. Therefore, staff recommends that the City Council conduct the public hearing and adopt the attached resolution establishing and amending user fees and development processing fees for various city services.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
I have these fees on a yellow slip here. Is that?
That's it.
Is there been some changes on it since they?
There was. The first one was, the first one for engineering services, it was listed for plan check, but they're actually Class A permits, and then they're just typos, and then a plan check is actually final map checks, it's just how they appear in the master fee schedule. And then on the second page, the bottom, the very last rate, there was a typo, and so it's currently $982, and the proposed new fee is $1,031.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
Quick question. Related to the fees, you said you studied these fees. Does that include studying related to other cities?
There are certain fees that staff may have, like a spreadsheet, to compare what other cities are charging, but we basically calculated what it currently costs the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And I will entertain a motion.
Move the item.
Second.
Motion second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, items for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, your first item is 9A, which is an amendment to the agreement with Scott Fidakis for plan check review services, and Elena Chang is here to give a staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. SFA has provided a comprehensive plan check review of building, plumbing, mechanical, and electrical system plans for compliance to the state and local codes for the city since 2007. The extension and increase of the latest contract is required in order to provide the level of plan review service expected by those that we serve. The amended term of this contract extends the original contract through June 30, 2013, with total compensation not to exceed $500,000, which is funded with plan check fees paid for by the developers. This is an increase in compensation from $250,000 in the original contract due to a one-time increase in demand for plan check services related to the Water Park Hotel and other large development projects in progress. The amount in the contract is budgeted in the general fund, and no additional budget allocation is needed. Therefore, staff recommends that City Council approve Amendment Number Five to the agreement with SFA in the amount of $500,000 for one year for plan check service reviews, plan checks review services, and authorize the city manager to execute amendment and make minor modifications as appropriated thereto. This concludes staff's report, and staff's available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move the issue.
Second. Have a motion second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
9B.
Mr. Mayor, 9B, at the request of Time Warner, they ask that this item be continued to a meeting in July.
Okay, then we'll go to 9C.
9C is a city purchase agreement with the Marty Reese family for acquisition on Harbor Boulevard, and Greg Brown is here to give a staff report for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal. Good evening, Mayor Dalton, City Council members. Your consideration tonight is a proposed acquisition of real property located at 12291 and 12311 Harbor Boulevard, and 12292 and 12312 Thackeray Drive. On April 24, 2012, the successor agency, the Garden Grove Agency for Community Development, approved the acquisition of these properties, which were subject to a disposition and development agreement. Since that time, staff has been notified by the State of California Department of Finance that it is the DOF's position that the disposition and development agreement is not an enforceable obligation. Discussions with the DOF continue and could eventually result in the DDA being approved as enforceable. At that time, action could be taken to transfer these properties to the successor agency and then reimburse the city. The purchase price is $2,555,000, which includes relocation costs for the owner-operated business, a broker's commission of $70,000, closing costs will be paid out of city funds from the sale of real property. The initial financial impact of this transaction will be absorbed by the city, as I mentioned, but could be transferred at a later date. Based on the foregoing, staff recommends that the successor agency move and approve the recommended actions as outlined in the staff report. And with that, concludes my report, and we're available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second.
Have a motion second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay. Mr. Broadwater, do you have anything?
Well, we opened up a fountain or water park with inside Atlantis Park last Saturday morning, and there was about, well, actually, it's built to hold about 40 kids playing in the water. I think there was about 150 playing in it, but they were having a ball, it was a great time, and it's going to be a great asset to Atlantis Park. I just believe that water and kids go together, and... I just believe that water and kids go together, and they can't drown in it. There is no pond or anything else. It's just running through the water as it comes up and comes out. So I thought it was great.
I also went to Atlantis Park opening. That was a really exciting thing for my 20-month-old. She hasn't got the nerve to go out there herself yet, but I know that kids in Garden Grove are going to enjoy the park, and the fee is so minimal to the fun that they could have all day long. Aside from the water park, they have picnic areas, and they have also, they also cater to private birthday parties, which I had for my nine-year-old son when he was five years old, and that was the most exciting birthday he ever had, because he got to be king of Atlantis for the day. And he had two chaperones from, staff from the city, helping with the birthday and having all kinds of games with him, and not because he's my son, that this is offered to all the kids in Garden Grove if they want to have a party there. And also coming up is the Fourth of July. I want to remind the community that the, please only buy the legal fireworks and be safe during Fourth of July. There's a very hefty fine if you have illegal fireworks, and parents, if you go out there and buy fireworks, make sure it's from a booth with a permit, and you can always check that by going to the booth yourself, and there's permits taped onto the booths. Also, Fourth of July is another holiday, and you know what that means. Buy in Garden Grove. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Yes, congratulations to Kim Hoy and her staff on a lot of hard work and a number of years in the making to bring that splash pad about. Kids and water, yeah, goes together great. It's tough to pull the kids out of there. And very best thing about the splash pad there is just that all that water you see that goes down ends up going into a 4,000-gallon underground tank and ends up getting recycled back into the drinking fountains. In Anaheim.
Happy Fourth of July to all, and I have to remind Mayor Pro Tem that not only buy in Garden Grove, buy your fireworks in Garden Grove. That would be, because Westminster, other cities are selling fireworks now, so I would encourage that, because a lot of the proceeds, or a portion of proceeds, go to nonprofit, Garden Grove nonprofits. So it's worthwhile, it's fun, it's enjoyable to celebrate the Fourth of July, and some of the money, and the money goes to good causes and good groups. And I enjoyed the splash pad as well. We did a great job. Kudos to our staff for making it possible. And summertime's coming up. I want to encourage people, especially kids, to take advantage of our summer programs that, for signups. Just look at our webpage in Garden Grove. So enjoy your summer. Have a safe summer. Have a safe Fourth of July, and that's it.
I think all of us were at the splash pad, and a couple of them were, I thought, I thought coming back in their Speedos, but I changed, changed his mind. But no, it was great. If you saw the kids out there, as Mr. Broadwater said, they, they had a great time. I mean, it was just awesome. And that park is a little jewel in the city of Garden Grove. It's just awesome. Atlantis Park is unbelievable, and I think that unfortunately, it's get underutilized, and as Ms. Nguyen pointed out, there are, you can rent it for parties, and the staff is great. I mean, they, it's just unbelievable. And of course, when the snow time comes, Christmas, we'll have ice in there. So it's, it's a, I guess it's a park for all seasons, because we adapt to whatever we want to at the time or need to at the time. But the kids just had a great time, and the nice thing about it, I don't think there was quite 150 kids on there. However, the large number of kids, there was no pushing, no shoving. Everybody was having fun. Everybody was getting along, and it just made all of us feel great. Fourth of July is coming up. Have a safe and sane, and buy safe and sane fireworks, and remember that if you want to use illegals, it could cost you $1,000. So if you're going to do it, give us your address ahead of time, and we'll have the citation issued, and we'll come out and hand it to you. I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and the next meeting will be Tuesday, July 10, 2012, at 5:30 in the council chamber chair. Thank you.